This time we move to follow the meeting's order, if you will not pledge fully. Pledge fully.
Pledge fully. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please. Pearson.
Present.
Rafferty.
Present.
Wolf.
Present.
Nichols.
Here.
Ware.
Present.
Sanders.
Present.
We do have a form and I thank you all for your attendance. Before we begin today, we have a couple items we will start with our public comments. We'll be dealing with Diane Chauvin.
Hi. First of all, I would like to thank you since the last time I was here, all the property that we were complaining about has been cleaned up. So, you guys are right on the wall with that. And another thing I'd like to address to everybody. We've got one of the finest police departments probably in Illinois. And I've seen a lot of bad mouth on the internet about Kokea Police this, Kokea Police that. I'm not, I'm here to tell you, I raised my own child. It wasn't Mike King's job to raise my child. It wasn't Kokea Police's job to raise my child. It was my job. So, all this about, we need this and we need that. We need our streets cleaned up, we need these houses torn down. We need, people take responsibility for that. But as far as activities for your children or raising your children, that's my job. That was my job from the time my child was born. It's not the chief of police, the committers. That really offends me. And some of these vulgar comments on Facebook are these nasty cartoons about different people. I think they belong. Because my granddaughter saw them and wondered how his friends were with them people. So, that's all I've got to say. But I want to thank you.
If you tell the truth.
For, do what?
Sir. Sir. Sir.
No, may I? What was the truth?
Sir. Were you friends with him?
Am I friends with him? I went to high school with Jerry, yeah, his friend, I'm his wife, Mr. Spray. I've known him for years, I can't say we're friends, but I know the gentleman, he's practiced law for years in this town.
I'm going to put his ass in back in seventy seven.
Are you an attorney?
Sir.
Is anybody else here an attorney?
Sir. Sir.
If you're an attorney, then debate.
Diane, we're done.
Yeah, I'm done.
Don't talk out of turn.
I'm done.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chauvin.
No, no, I'm going to leave because it's just ridiculous. It's ridiculous. The whole thing is ridiculous.
Thank you very much. I apply.
Okay, I'm sorry, I applied to help you with the law.
Chief. Sir. Thank you, Mr. Chauvin. Thank you so much. Next we have Ms. Brenda Jackson.
I travel all over the streets quite often. And I see where the four track club plays football at, they put in the basketball courts. And today there was a quick night about a ten foot high chain link fence. And the sign that says the Kokea Police Park. We don't have anybody taking care of that, the regular Kokea Park, much less a second one. They don't take care of the wedge, the park's supposed to be taking care of the wedge, the lights have never been done. The excuse at the time when this was initially brought up was the electrician was on vacation. And that was probably a month ago at least, and I'm sure he's probably there. The walking trail of the park has never been repaired or fixed. So, I'm just wondering who's going to take care of the second park?
Okay. Ms. Jackson, thank you for your comment. Ms. Jackson, basically that area there, it is an extension of the Kokea Park as we know it, the one by the Perry's course. That is an extension of the park. This was done before I got here. And so, my goal is to build that area the best as possible. Also, you know, I understand there may be some issues with people with the basket, putting the basketball over there. But one thing that I can say is I'm trying, I'm trying to give these kids something to do out here.
That's fine.
And so, if it doesn't work, then I, I'll take the blame for it. But I'm trying to give these kids something to do. And it will be managed. I realize that we've had issues in the past at the basketball courts and all of that. But I'm going to go in with an iron fist on this. And if they don't want to play, I'll shut it down. We're going to run it the right way. But it is an extension of the park. Next we have Mr. Walter Smith.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to ask one thing because I had so many lies to me about their, whenever they were putting, supposed to be putting bids out for mowers, commercial mowers for the park or the buildings. And I had called and asked. Rich Duncan never did call me back. I even saw him August the third, I believe it was, when they had the students in the park. And their, because I come to him and he said that they were buying mowers on, on consignment, which was a lie, telling me that they was on consignment. I tried to get a bid, I talked to his wife three or four times for him to call me back and give me a bid. Well, I saw the, the, their mowers, and I knew where you guys got the mowers and why I'd come to the board. I could have saved over eighteen hundred dollars on those mowers. They were, had bigger motors, better mowers than what you guys got. So, like I said, I don't see where there are you, any other town would not try to go out of town and buy equipment if they put it out for bid. And I have never seen a bid, so I don't know when, if there's bids out now, you already paid for the mowers. So, like I said, and there's nothing, nothing getting done other than found me the other day, yesterday I think I saw, four guys over there putting some coal nicks or whatever on the, on the Moosehead Lane, which that's been supposed to been done over a year ago to grind it up. Nothing been done on the range yet. I asked Duncan, he turned around and told, uh, one that was on that, was a little street, he called me up, and then he accused me of putting the, telling the, telling them to put the blacktop in over there by the rectory, which is not a done job right. And their, I told him not to put the blacktop in, to put some more rock in. And they wouldn't put the more rock in. And if they wouldn't have put the barricades up, they would have had people damaging their vehicles because it was over four inches down. And their, he wanted, and I told Duncan, I told Rafferty, the same thing. He told me, like, their, Tapley knew what he was doing, he was on the streets for thirty years. I don't care how many years he commanded on the street. You don't turn around and, the people that did the job, you fill the thing up always, you turn around and you let it pack, then when it settles, you add more rock. Whenever it quits settling, you dig it out, then you put blacktop in. You know, I've been in all kinds of work, all down through the years. And like I said, we try to save the buildings ever since I've been in business, money, not turn around and spend, make them spend more money. Because like if the guys didn't know what they were doing, and a lot of times they didn't know the work, and here they could have been out working on the street instead of trying to straighten out something. And then spend two days with two guys that our taxpayer money is paying for. And then turn around and send it over, and my guys have fixed it two hours back. So, I mean, so I don't know, you know. I guess we're going to have to wait another couple of years before we're going to get any street work. The storm sewers are more than half full. And I asked about getting them, I asked Tapley to come over, and I was showing him, meeting with him, tried to work with him on it. I don't even see him there anymore. And he don't even live in this town anymore either.
Well, thanks for your comment, Mr. Smith. Just a few things very quickly. First, I want to address the issue on Mr. Duncan. Listen, you know, when it comes to, you can, I apologize if you didn't get a bid on this whole deal with the lawn mowers. I'll take, I'll take that, one of that blame right there. You can put that as me dropping the ball on that, so you didn't get a, a bid on that. I spoke with Trustee Nichols about the issue, so you can blame me for that. Mr. Duncan does his job. I know that he gets a lot of slack or not, but he, a lot of things come straight to me. And he does not, he may not know about it. And so, I, I think that I, I want the best darn clerk somebody can ask for. And so, I know, uh, Trust, Club Duncan and his wife, they take a lot of heat, but once again, you can blame me for that. He, about this, he, he doesn't, he may not even know about it. And I just want to also address the issue on the roads. The road repaired. As far as these roads that are, were supposed to be getting repaired, White Street, I think David and a few other streets, we just talked with IDOT. And basically, the roads have been approved from the higher ups. But what happened, what's, what's really happening is when it gets back down to the state budget, and they're in this limbo fiasco that they have going, the state, they don't have the funds. And so, now we're just waiting on the state, but it hasn't approved. And as far as on Moosehead Lane, uh, that is the same, it's the same issue with Moosehead Lane. We just got word yesterday when that road was supposed to be prepared, we were supposed to get that road repaired here very shortly, but before the end of this year. Now they're talking about it may be 2019 before that road gets repaired. When I told them, not in my watch, that's, that can't happen, that road cannot last until 2019. And so, when, uh, Mr. Tapley brought me that information, I told him to just go start patching until I can get on the phone with the higher ups, so we can get this road repaired. So, there's a lot of extra red tape going on beyond just us on the road. And so, I just wanted to, uh, address those issues.
One, one other thing I want to say. When I called Village Hall and I asked for Duncan or anybody to call me back, and they won't call me back. Now, what kind of person is that? When they won't call me back? I don't say they got to call me back that day. They can call me back in two days or three days. But like I said, I met him different times and asked, and like I said, why I couldn't got a bid before you guys even bought the mowers, they would not send me nothing out of the bid. And I asked, what kind, not the grand horse, what you, what you buy in bid mounts, if you understand what I mean? What a bid mount mower is, some people don't. That's where the deck's more up underneath the mower, there are, if you're going to buy an upfront mower. Because there's a way difference in price on the mower, if you're buying diesel or if you're buying gas and all of that. That, that's what I had asked. And I think, for me being a business person in town, there, I think that that should have been said to me, regardless if I voted for you or not. That does not, should not make any difference. My business collects a lot of tax, we got a lot of people come from as much as a hundred miles away. That tax money, so much of that goes to the buildings. Am I right or am I wrong? Or you can't answer that?
I have a correction. Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your comment. Uh, next we have Ms. Jessica McCallum.
I've got a couple questions. Why didn't we apply for the emergency management, the park grants? Why didn't we get any of that money?
Uh, you would have to ask the county.
Well, you guys would have paid us part for it. The status of the May to May audit, is that ongoing yet?
Yes.
And when will those results be?
I couldn't give you a definite time to order it to work as soon as I can.
Okay. And then my last question is the website.
The website is on construction as we speak. We have just gotten with all the department heads, we need their various informations as to what they'd like to see on the website. And so, we just finished up that process last week, so it should be, we'll be chipping away slow. Okay? Next we have Mr. Bill. Okay. Ted Conner.
Thank you. Just from the get-go, I want to say, and a lot of you know that, I am not anti-police. I've worked with a lot of police officers, they've helped me out with situations. And I'm just concerned that, well, one, that they're overworked, they need more support, they need less interference. And I don't know who directs the policy to them, but some of the policies need to be changed. I've said this over and over again, the public needs to be informed. I have a neighbor that lived across from me for a couple of years. She moved out a few months ago because about six months ago, she ended up with the blood of a victim on her door. And she had two small children, and she just couldn't take the chance anymore. In that area, in a year, two people got shot that I know of, and one got killed. I don't think the police have given enough support from the administration. And as far as policy goes, I was told by my neighbor that when her car got broke into, the officer that came out said, well, they sell drugs out there on their corner all the time. That's the kind of information I think citizens need to be told, so we can watch out. And to make it even worse, I had a police officer tell me that the people they believe they have shot my son, they knew that they were hanging out in my yard on my property. And nobody bothered to tell me or my neighbors or my son, so we could prepare ourselves and protect ourselves. That, that just bothered the heck out of me when I found out they knew it. They knew it. I know they'd have to find evidence to arrest and convict these people. But if they know they're hanging out in an area where it might hurt citizens, they need to be in trouble that all the time. Once again, they don't have enough support. They don't have enough officers, they don't have enough police, they don't have the correct equipment. We have to go outside of the village to get help from these officers. We have, we have to, because these are the lives of our citizens that we're talking about. I have a couple in their eighties, live across the street from me. Those people in the minority have gone up there, broke in their house and killed them. We need to know when a dangerous situation is on our end, so we can be on alert. I've gone outside of the village to get some help. I just picked up five hundred dollars today from a couple of them, son was shot and killed last year. People are getting empathy for all this, and they're getting fed up. They know the police are overwhelmed. And they need the support of all the board members. And they need less interference in their operations.
Thank you, Mr. Conner. Okay, moving on, moving ahead and getting to the minutes from the board meeting on June twenty eighth, two thousand and sixteen. At this time, I need a motion in a second, please.
Motion.
Motion by trustee Sanders. Second by trustee Rafferty. Roll call please. Pearson.
Yes.
Rafferty. Yes. Wolfert.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Ware.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Ms. Pro.
It's a long day, which you have with me.
Thank you. Next we have payroll and accounts payable, uh, due to August. At this time, I need a motion in a second, please.
Motion.
Motion by trustee Ware, second.
Second.
By trustee Wolfert, roll call please. Pearson.
Yes.
Rafferty.
Yes.
Wolfert.
Yes.
Nichols.
No.
Ware.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Pro. No unfinished business at this time. We do have a few items on the new business. First, we have resolution number sixteen dash ten sixty-two. Resolution authorizing execution of contract, uh, deal of purgation for the purposes of providing weekly sock seating monthly in month of payroll. Basically, we're moving a dollar for a certain trusted business in the business payroll. At this time, I need a motion in a second for approval, please.
Motion.
Motion by trustee Sanders.
Second.
Second by trustee Rafferty. Roll call please. Pearson.
Yes.
Rafferty.
Yes.
Wolfert.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Ware.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Pro. Next we have resolution sixteen dash ten sixty-three. Resolution authorizing per se correct minutes of Monday, May eighteenth, two thousand and fifteen. Just going to go backwards, there was an arrow on that, uh, minutes on those minutes. And so, we're just going to give the approval for per se correct minutes. At this time, I need a motion in a second for approval.
Motion.
Motion by trustee Ware, second.
Second.
By trustee Pearson. Roll call please. Pearson.
Yes.
Rafferty.
Yes.
Wolfert.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Ware.
Yes.
Sanders.
That was the end of my, um, Wolfert.
Wolfert, okay, sorry, missed it. And Sanders.
Yes.
Okay. Next we have resolution, uh, ten dash ten sixty-four. A resolution, now, before we get to ten sixty-four, resolutions ten dash ten sixty-four and also resolutions ten dash ten sixty-five, they go, pretty much go together. It's in relation to pending litigation that we pretty much came to an agreement on. So, resolu, and they both read the same, resolution of the board trustees, of the state counties, state of Illinois, authorizing the mayor and trustees of the village of Kokea to execute an agreement to settle litigation against the village of Kokea, Illinois, the mayor of the village of Kokea, and those trustees of the village of Kokea. At this time, before we vote on this, I'm going to turn it over to a council here, Attorney Mark Scottins, to kind of give us a brief synopsis.
Thank you, Mayor. Trustees, maybe. These are nine cases, seven in the first resolution, two on the second resolution. All of these cases have been settled. They have been settled without the village of Kokea paying any new money at all. The only money we pay in connection even that has to do with those cases is what we agreed to in the labor agreements as months ago, six months ago. But that is added to this, but all the, all the money is being paid by the insurer, our insurance carrier. So, for that, for that reason, I'd like to introduce the Attorney for Insurance, Gary Richardson.
Gary Richardson, I've been representing the city and four trustees and mayor to sue for their official legal assets. The settlement agreements in these lawsuits will result in insensible lawsuits with presence that means been done forever, can't come back again. And I'm certain they're recommended that the board approve the settlements. Any questions we got to answer?
I got one. It's just a new attorney, Charles.
They won't, it, it won't, because they won't.
I mean, this is coming up.
I've got a competition company, you, you know, we can try to break them.
And lawsuit after lawsuit after lawsuit.
Again, I'm aware of them, and a lot of them were lawsuits that were prior, before I got them. And so, they have a competition office, and they, which shows that our rights are in question. I can tell you before you got there. Okay, at this time, I need a motion in a second for approval.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, motion by trustee Ware, second by trustee Pearson. Roll call please. Pearson.
Yes.
Rafferty.
Yes.
Wolfert.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Ware.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Resolution ten dash ten sixty-four, approved. Next we have a resolution. Uh, yes, trustee Nick.
Am I supposed to go on this? Or am I supposed to abstain on that? Because I got somebody included in this.
You know what, being that you do have someone that is included in this, let's redo the vote one more time. Okay? Being that trustee Nichols does have someone included in this, this lawsuit, I think that it is best that we, that he abstains from this vote. So, let's redo that vote one more time. So, resolution point of order is, I believe Mr. Nichols is on the second resolution.
That's right.
Uh, not the first. So, he can't vote on the first one, the second one he shouldn't. Okay, sounds good. Okay, so we'll go ahead and move to resolution ten dash sixty-five, which is basically the same thing here. So, I need a motion in a second for approval. I need a motion. Motion by trustee Rafferty, second. My trustee Ware. Okay? Roll call please. Pearson.
Yes.
Rafferty.
Yes.
Wolfert.
Yes.
Nichols. Ware.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Approved. Thank you for that motion, trustee Nichols. Okay, ordinance number sixteen dash thirteen thirty-one, an ordinance on village of Kokea, state of Illinois, approving the appointment of Fransello Jackson to serve in one of our agents at IMR. Listen, this here, IMR, we were required to have an agent to oversee the IMR. This doesn't mean any extra on salary, it's just someone that we needed and had to be approved to report to make sure that our IMR is on. Ms. Jackson will have the more qualified to ensure IMR is on. Okay? At this time, I need a motion in a second for approval.
Motion.
Motion by trustee Sanders.
Second.
Second by trustee Wolfert. Roll call please. Pearson.
Yes.
Rafferty.
Yes.
Wolfert.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Ware.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Ordinance is approved. Next we have ordinance sixteen dash thirteen thirty-two, an ordinance authorizing executive intergovernmental agreement between the Illinois Office of the Comptroller and the village of Kokea regarding access to the comptroller's local debt recovery program. And this ordinance, in a nutshell, basically, we are targeting individuals who own the village's money and have left the village. And so, if they left an old water and sewer bill, or if they had services that they just left, we are now trying to implement steps as to where we can collect those monies via income tax, or even payroll tax, or any additional income that these people may receive. So, this is just the first step in trying to collect those monies that are owed to us here in the village. Okay? At this time, I need a motion in a second.
Motion.
Motion by trustee Sanders. Second by trustee Rafferty. Roll call please. Pearson.
Yes.
Wolf, Rafferty.
Yes.
Wolfert.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Ware.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Ordinance approved. Okay, we have two business licenses this evening. The first business license is in. At home?
At home.
At home. At home performance, okay? Okay, like in school. Yes, sir. I am aware of the gentleman's, uh, name for his, his business license, on the same where it says, hey, you know, in particular, the gentleman gave us, yes, I met with the gentleman, one-on-one person, we talked for an hour. And basically, what this gentleman wants to do is he does not want to do business in the village of Kokea. He is trying to repair some of his grandmother's home. And but in order to do that, he needs a business license.
But he doesn't have a business license to work in the village.
Right. And he is, first of all, the gentleman is not implying to work throughout the village. And second of all, uh, you know, I've talked with the gentleman for an hour, I realize he made a mistake in his life path. It was nonviolent offense, just young and made a mistake. And so, I'm asking that the board bring him a, a business license. Yes, sir. At this time, I need a motion in a second for approval.
Motion.
Motion by trustee Sanders, second. Second by trustee Ware. Roll call please. Pearson.
Yes.
Rafferty.
Yes.
Wolfert.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Ware.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Thank you. Next we have Kincaid's Electrical Contract. Uh, we have a motion in a second for approval. Motion by trustee Rafferty, second. Make the motion, make the second. Okay. Trustee Pearson, uh, Pearson, roll call please. Pearson.
Yes.
Rafferty.
Yes.
Wolfert.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Ware.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Approved. Uh, before we get to the chief report, as a reminder to all trustee board members, uh, council, attorney Scottins, attorney Richardson, they have some papers for us to sign right immediately after the meeting, so please stay so we can sign the papers, okay? Uh, chief report.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, we had a national night out August second, and I consider it to be a huge success. I think there were smiles on everybody's faces. It, it turned out to be great, and I want to thank everyone who helped and participated. It really worked out good. I'll start with fires. I'm going to try to summarize. It's been, it's been a while. Fires, I think, are down. We've only had a few. Those have been down. Burglaries have been sporadic, but most have been in the St. Joe area, so that's an area we got to be concerned with, and a lot of it has been cleared up. We did solve a burglary from April, I just want to highlight that with a burglary at Jessica's residence.
Thank you.
Travonta Nicholson, age twenty-two, was charged with one count of residential burglary. And we, we worked very, very hard on that to get that done. So, uh, I do want to highlight the robberies, because it seems like over the summer, the robberies have increased a little bit. And then most of them are just little street robberies, one-on-one, people with each other. Uh, in July, we had four, uh, three, in, you know, in residential areas. Um, both, two of them were on St. Dorothy. Um, one of them, two juveniles were arrested and charges are pending. Um, the other one in July, out of, was at the Quick Stop Two, Cowboys Two, over there on, on Upper Kehokea. And somebody tried to come in and rob him and he, uh, he inadvertently shot back at him. I guess he had a gun, so, as they were leaving. So he, he failed and, uh, we're still investigating that, so. Um, in August, we had one, two, three, four, five, six. See, they really increased. We had six robberies and most of them, like I said, were all street robbery. A lot of them were personal, you know, people that knew each other. Uh, the areas, they've been on, it's, it's no certain area, except Richard and Fall. In that area, there was two, so. That is an area we need to be concerned about also. Uh, in September, we've had one so far. An older gentleman on Donald got robbed after he got home from work. And we got some good leads on that one, too. There was in July, at the end of July, a carjacking in, in the Parkland Manor area. And those, those culprits were captured in Maplewood, Missouri. Uh, they were charged with something over there and, uh, the charges are pending here. So we're, we're good, we're, we're probably gonna clear that one up. Uh, there was, there was, the shootings were sporadic also. There wasn't a whole lot. There was a few drive-bys here and there, but nobody got hit. Just a pro, occasional piece of property got hit and that, that's all I have to say on that. And then, uh, there was another shooting that started moto where some, some people, it was a boyfriend, I guess, girl, a relationship type thing. And, uh, they, they were, they were shot. They started shooting at the people there and then it ended up on Milton. They shot at him again over there. Some property was hit. Nobody was hit. We did get a, a Mandan Armstrong charge with a violation of OP, fell into possession of firearm and aggravated discharge of firearm. So we cleared up that one. And there was also, in the beginning of July, July first, you might have heard, in the Frotneck area, there was a male shot in the torso while he was standing on the street. And we're not getting very much cooperation out of witnesses and the victim, so it, it's still unsolved. But he would, he survived and his injuries were not life-threatening. And the last one I wanna talk about, and I don't know if you all heard about it, but there's a home evasion out in City View. An eighty-six-year-old man, who lived there most of his life, uh, some guys barged in on him and shot him and took some things in his car. And our detective division have been working long hours on that case, and they're, they're just about to solve it for good. So we're, we're confident that we'll get some subjects charged on that.
Okay. Thank you, chief. Uh, if you really move on, listen, hey, guys, over the last, I realize, yeah, this is our first meeting in about two months. Uh, but our police department has been working tirelessly, hours on, hours, trying to get all these cases solved. And they have really been working their tails off. And I can tell you, I've, I've just been watching them. They, they're, they're out there. They all working. They are doing the jobs. And I just wanna give these guys a round of applause right now.